Great. Good evening and welcome to the Hillsborough County Board of County Commissioners' Public Hearings on both Mobility Fees and Park Impact Fees. And I'll take a moment just to welcome back Commissioner Harry Cohen. Thank you. It's so good to, it's pleased to see you and that everything went well. So we're all, we're all feeling very whole to have such a six members in attendance in person tonight. Nonetheless, this is a hybrid meeting. And anyone who wishes to speak at this public hearing will be able to do so by completing the online public comment signup form found at hcflgov.net/speak. You will be required to provide your name and telephone number on the online form. This information is being requested to facilitate the audio conferencing process. The Chair will call in speakers by name in the order in which they have completed the online public comments signup form. Prioritization is on a first come, first served basis. An audio call-in number will be provided to participants that have completed the form after it's received by the county. All callers will be muted upon calling and will be unmuted in the submission order after being recognized by the Chair by name. Up to three minutes are allowed for each speaker. Signups for the public hearing will not be accepted after 5:30 PM on the day of the hearing. Public comments offered using communications media technology will be afforded equal consideration as if the public comments were offered in person. And we've called the meeting to order, so we'll start now with the proposed amendments to the county's mobility fee ordinance. And we'll start with our county attorney's office. Cameron Clark? I'm sorry. Thank you. Can we have a roll call?
Good evening Kemp.
Here.
Cohen.
Here.
Hagan.
Here.
Myers.
Here.
Offerman.
Here.
Smith.
I'm here. My mic's not working. It won't stay on.
Commissioner Smith is present. White.
Here.
Thank you. You have a quorum?
Thank you.
I got it.
So now, get the equipment working now. So now, again, I'll introduce Cameron Clark of the county attorney's office for the proposed amendments to the mobility fee ordinance.
Thank you, Madam Chair. This is Cameron Clark with the county attorney's office. Can you hear me?
A little volume more would be good if we can get that.
Try again. Can you hear me?
Probably a little better. Go ahead.
Commissioner Kemp, can you hear me?
Yes, yes. That's good.
Apologize. Please stand by.
Yes, I guess he ca-
Testing. Can you hear me?
Yes. Can you hear us?
I stand by, Mr. Clark. We're figuring out an audio issue right now. One second.
I hope everyone saw the news, for anyone out there too, that the COVID-19 vaccines are going down on this Monday to 40 and older, and the week after that to all ages. And, which will be wonderful. So that you all know, at the Greyhound Racing Track in Tampa, you can just show up even without an appointment. And if you fall within the categories at the time named and get a vaccine, and I've heard that they have been busy, but they can take any, anyone who comes. And it's better not to go first thing in the morning. But, but by late morning, you can go there and get your COVID vaccine at Raymond James. That's a federally, a federal site, and you have to sign up at one place online for that. As well, there are numerous places that we are, have available. The county is going out to special sites to give that. And I know that I was just lucky enough to have my COVID vaccine at the Pepin Center at the county site. And so, I don't know if you want to add anything about that, Ms. Wise, about what's available so that people will know?
Thank you. And on our county website, we have all the options that are available for people to sign up because there are different signups for both the Raven James site, which is run by the state, as well as the county sites. And as you mentioned, the dog track run by the federal government does not require an appointment. And all these sites have availability. And their various options is whether it's a drive-up or ability to walk up. And then we are very proud of our targeted vaccination areas where we're going into churches and low-income senior housing communities and some other senior communities throughout the county. So hopefully, everybody avails themselves of all those opportunities. If anyone has any questions, a lot of Q&amp;A on our county website.
Great. And anyone 50 or older, healthcare workers, anyone involved with our school system, anything from teachers to professors to bus drivers to cafeteria workers are now eligible and can just make an appointment or just show up at the Greyhound Racing Track site off Nebraska Avenue in Tampa. So hopefully, we will have big numbers and I'm personally, it's good to see-
Is Cameron Clark, can you hear me?
Can you, can you hear us yet, Mr. Clark?
Yeah. Good evening. Yes, this is Glenn with HTV. We are still resolving the issue.
Okay.
Okay, sounds good. I'm on hold. Thanks.
Yes.
Madam Chair, would you like me to introduce the item while Cameron is getting-
Sure, that might be, I didn't want to put you on the spot if you didn't have the information available, but thank you. That's good, Ms. Beck.
Thank you.
Christine Beck.
Yes, Commissioners, Christine Beck, county attorney. We are here tonight for a public hearing on a matter that was set at your March 9th land use meeting to authorize us to set this hearing for tonight at 6:00 PM to consider an amendment to the Hillsborough County Mobility Fee Program Ordinance that would amend the phase-in schedule and to begin assessing mobility rates at their full 100% assessment rate effective no later than June 30th, 2021. The ordinance as currently written would have a, have the rates go to 90% effective January 1 of 2022 and to the full 100% October 1 of 2022. So this would accelerate that phase-in schedule if the board were to approve it. This is a public hearing, and at this time, it would be appropriate to take public comment, and then we can have board discussion and questions.
Great. Thank you so much.
Excuse me, Madam Chair?
Yes?
The clerk that is recording the meeting is not currently getting audio from the room.
Okay. Looks like we continue to have some technical difficulties. I guess I'll give a couple minutes to see if we can get this repaired. What should we, you know? Okay.
Yes, Madam Chair, this is Glenn with HTV. We'll go ahead and we'll get the issue resolved. Thank you.
Okay, so let's maybe take a five-minute pause. Is that enough? Okay, so we're, we're going to take a five-minute break here, and we'll all be back at 6:17 or 6:20 and move forward with the meeting. Thank you.
I think we will all be happy when we could just be in one.
Keep going. Mic check. Five, four, three, two, one. We are currently in recess until we get some audio issues resolved. This is a mic check. Ten, nine, eight, seven, six, five, four, three, two, one. One, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, nine, ten. Today is March 25th, 2021, 2020, yeah, 2021. We are here for the Board of County Commissioners' Public Hearing.
One.
Thank you. And welcome again to the Board of County Commissioners' Public Hearing on Mobility Fees and Park Impacts Fees. We're resuming now after some technical difficulties. And we were first hearing on proposed amendments to the Mobility Fee Ordinance, which I think we completed that at that time, explained by Ms. Beck.
Commissioner, I don't think they could hear.
Okay, that's what I was wondering about. I thought you would let me know.
Yeah, so let's let Cameron Clark reintroduce it.
Okay. Go ahead, Mr. Clark, from the county attorney's office.
Thank you, Madam Chair. This is Cameron Clark with the county attorney. Can you hear me?
Yes. You could speak up a little.
I'll do it this way. So this is a proposed amendment to the Mobility Fee Ordinance. The Board updated the Mobility Fee Study in May of last year. That raised, that raised the fee by a fairly significant amount, and the Board at that time decided to phase in the new fee. Beginning January 1 of this year, the mobility fee has been assessed at a rate of 80% of the full amount. It's scheduled to increase to 90% of the full amount beginning January 1 of next year, and then go to 100% of the full rate in October 1 of 2022. This action tonight was prompted by some proposed bill in the legislature that would amend the Florida Impact Fee Act. At the time that this public hearing was scheduled, that it would have placed a cap on the amount that an impact fee can be increased per year, 3% per year. And that bill at the time was proposed to take effect on July 1. Those two circumstances are, have changed. The bill now would take effect upon being signed by the Governor into law, which would then move the effective date up. And second of all, the 3% cap is no longer in the bill. It has language in it that if a, an impact fee was increased up to 25%, such an increase would have to be phased in over a two-year period. If it was increased between 25 and 50%, it would have to be phased in over a four-year period, and it could not be increased over 50%. There is a provision in the bill now that would seem to create exemption for those phase-in provisions. However, it has to be emphasized that the bill is still very fluid. There's no way to know at this time exactly what's going to be in the final version. But the proposed language in front of you would be to remove the phase-in tables, or at least accelerate them, for mobility fees. So the 100% assessment rate for mobility fees would begin on June 30 of this year. This is a notice public hearing. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Beck, we apparently still have our, Ms. Wise, some public, some difficult, technical difficulties. It's apparently by some notice not being heard on HTV.
They're checking it through YouTube, because we, of course, heard him just fine here.
Of course.
Yeah, staff is watching it on Frontier, on Facebook, and on YouTube, and they said it was just really choppy is what they were, that was the reception they were getting on all three sources, if I am reading this correctly. It's okay on Frontier now.
Seems like we should go with that.
Yeah, no, I just got it. It's perfect. Go.
Now, okay. I'm hoping that since we've got it on YouTube as part of the explanation now, that would suffice to continue now with the public testimony. Or should we?
It's good now.
Yeah, I thought you said it's good now, and they can hear on HTV. That would be-
That's good now.
-advisable.
Right. Okay, I just wanted to make sure in terms of Mr. Clark. That's all. Okay, great. Okay, so we'll move to public testimony now with regards to proposed amendments to the Mobility Fee Ordinance. And the first person that we have signed up is Ron Weaver. Mr. Weaver?
Mr. Weaver has not called in.
Okay. The next person is Edward Zwack.
And Edward Zwack also has not called in.
Okay. The next person is Noel Lacor.
Good evening. I'm here to speak in favor of increasing mobility fees, the full 100% recommended amount now, not later. According to the Developmental Services, the vast majority of roads in Hillsborough County are substandard. It's no secret that our county is far behind in transportation, especially in South Hillsborough County, where a majority of the residential construction is currently taking place. Pedestrian and bicycle infrastructure is almost nonexistent in South Hillsborough County, but thanks for the many, many sidewalks to nowhere. Many of our roads are dangerous and congested. We are tired of seeing children forced to walk extremely hazardous routes to and from school because of the lack of capital improvement. We are tired of our commute times increasing. We are tired of sitting in traffic. And our taxpayers are tired of subsidizing these developments so that the developers can generate higher profits.
Say-
I've heard a couple Commissioners give reasons for not wanting to vote yes on eliminating the phase-in of these impact and mobility fees. One of the reasons stated numerous times was that the B.O.C.C. should honor the phase-in deal made last year, simply because the deal was made. With all due respect, I strongly disagree. First, that was an old board. This is a new board. This board has the ability, no, has the obligation to make the right decision for all the residents of Hillsborough County, and that would be to have developers pay 100% of the mobility and impact fees now, not later. Second, the Florida Legislature is currently considering legislation in both the House and the Senate that would restrict local governments from increasing impact fees by more than 3% a year. If this legislation passes, the restrictions could greatly hinder the county's ability to complete its scheduled phase-in of mobility fees and park impact fees. These mobility and impact fees need to be assessed at the full recommended rate prior to the effective date of any proposed bill that might restrict the board's ability to fully assess new development scores impact on the county's ability and park infrastructure. That reason alone should be enough to pass this ordinance tonight. Please vote yes on this ordinance to eliminate the phase-in of the transportation, mobility, impact fees so that the county can begin collecting these fees at the full 100% rate now, not later. Thank you all for your time.
Thank you. Chris Vella?
Mr. Vella has not called in.
Okay. Russ Kahn?
And Mr. Kahn also has not called in.
Carol Ann Bennett?
Yes.
You're recognized.
Hi, my name's Carol Ann Bennett. I'm calling to urge the board to go ahead and impact, and stop the phasing in of the impact fees, stop the discount. There was an article in the Orlando Sentinel a couple years ago, and I'm going to read it to you. If growth pays for itself, then local governments like Sumter County must be swimming in cash. Instead, it's acting like a government drowning in the cost of growth. Sumter is so desperate for money that its five Republican county commissioners are ready to vote for a 26% increase in the current property tax rate. The county concedes in its own budget documents that the main culprit for this tax increase is the breakneck rate of growth tied to the villages' success. The villages is a textbook example of the big Florida lie that growth is self-sustaining. And yet, elected officials continue to be dazzled by developer promises of growth delivering more jobs and more taxes. Growth does mean jobs. The villages has created many hundreds of them, but many are low-paying service jobs, which has resulted in an affordable housing shortage in Sumter. That should sound familiar to the rest of this region. And all of those new tax dollars, not nearly enough to pay the bills. We're not here to say cities and counties should stop growing. We are here to say that bureaucrats and elected officials need to have eyes wide open when developers pitch projects. These projects will create jobs. They will generate taxes, and they come with a bill that one day has to be paid, just to ask the property owners in Sumter County. So I'm urging the board to go to vote yes and not have the phase-in or the discount. The people that move here should pay the full impact of the cost of moving here. The rest of the, the current residents should not have to subsidize their move, and we should not have to subsidize additional profit for developers. Thank you.
Thank you. Jennifer Mottzinger?
Good evening, Commissioners. Jennifer Mottzinger, representing the Tampa Bay Builders Association. This evening, you were considering eliminating a phased-in approach to the most recent mobility fee increase agreed upon by this board less than a year ago. I understand the concerns local governments had to ensure revenue was available to meet the expenditures, and I agree. Our industry should pay our fair share. But until the mobility fee programs began about five years ago, you had a concurrency system that was in place along with a transportation impact fee. The county made the industry pay for all the road improvements, or the project couldn't move forward under that failed system. And under that same failed system, there was about $100 million in credits owed to our industry that had to be dealt with before the county could push forward and begin collecting these new mobility fees, that that's the reason that your mobility fee revenues increase every year. We support a fair system for all. We supported the creation of the mobility fee system because we believe in paying our fair share. We believe counties should be building roads. And it did appear that this local government finally made transportation a priority investment a few years ago. Because those legacy systems, they did lead to sprawl. These fees were supposed to incentivize redevelopment and make it more desirable to build in more urban centers instead of forcing people to rural land where they could build every road, dedicate every school site, and build all the water infrastructure, which is much cheaper than infill development. But what's the goal for this evening? You have a fee structure in place that is collecting money. You still have to make the developer pay for the infrastructure and the road improvements. If you raise these fees again tonight, will the residents buying new homes, how are they going to benefit by you investing more money in transportation? Will that happen? Because that's not part of your capital improvements program. The people of South County, they are upset. These communities were not built overnight. There has been plenty of time and plenty of money to make some sort of improvement, but only you can make that a priority, not us. Developers are not given a free ride. We pay every single fee and good face that it is our fair share. But it is up to you, and you alone, to approve spending the money. In the spirit of transparency, I would encourage you to identify exactly what you're going to do with this money and publish a list so that we can see the results of the increase. And if that's not possible, let the structure stand as it is today and put together a plan for that additional revenue. Please don't repeat the decisions this county made with school impact fees. The industry agreed to doubling those fees last year as well, and this commission has not approved a school site. No schools are being built right now, and in South County, they're likely to see double sessions. And the money that you've collected from the development community fits in a bank account today not being used. Please do what's right for all of us. Prioritize spending money to keep up with growth.
Your time is up, Ms. Mottzinger. Sorry, your time is up. Thank you. And finally, Jim Davidson?
Yes, good afternoon, Commissioners. I'm here, Jim Davidson from New Tampa. I'm here to remind the Board of a few items concerning the mobility fee and absolutely other new construction impact revenues. I'm sure the Board is aware that the owners of the building being constructed are the ones who ultimately pay 100% of this mobility fee, not the developers. This was told to the Board by their own chosen expert from FSU. So saying it's time for the developers to pay their fair share of infrastructure just isn't true, because the homeowner pays 100%. I'm also sure the Board knows that the collected revenues must be spent in a timely manner and that they can only be spent or applied to the portion of the road that the pair will impact. So to say that you are, so say you are going to look at a failed road, a road that has currently failed in South County. You cannot use the impact fees from here going forward to fix that road and make it unfailed unless you're using old impact fees from prior construction. It, the Supreme Court has been very clear on this in their rational nexus test, and the fees can only be applied to the capacity impact that the new development will have on the failed road. Looking at the credit side of the fees, the sales tax no longer exists, and the 10-year transportation plan is all but canceled. These credits are lost in the formula. The amount of the fee that should increase without paying the percentage from 80 to 100%. The mobility fee should go up because you lost the credits from the sales tax and the ad valorem taxes from the 10-year transportation plan. Construction, depending on the elasticity of the housing market, the homeowners are going to pay ad valorem tax on this mobility fee. And current homeowners, depending on the elasticity of the housing market, that fee will also correspond to increasing the values of their home, and they will pay an impact fee, or an ad valorem tax on the mobility fee. So, this year, you're going to collect almost $1 billion estimated ad valorem tax. In the Oliver Tindale formula, the average price for a home they used was $214,000. All of your impact fees combined exceeds 10% of the cost of a new home. At $1 billion, that would mean somewhere between $50 and $100 million in ad valorem taxes will be collected just- taxes will be collected just because of the impact fee. And unlike Pasco County, which is brought up about all the time for mobility fees, this county does not tiff their ad valorem taxes. So the gist is, is that I do not think that it is time to raise it from 80 to 100%.
I'm sorry, your time is up. Mr. Davidson, your time is up? Sorry, thank you. Thank you. Okay, so we have completed our public comments, and we'll now open this up to board discussion. And let me see, it looks like Commissioner White, you're the first that I see a hand up from.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Appreciate the public comment as always, but I suspect that every commissioner walked into this room, or in the case of Commissioner Hagan, who's with us virtually, we all know how we're going to vote on this issue, I think. So just in the interest of brevity, I'm just going to say that park amenities are a nice thing to have during good times, you know, when revenues are flowing in. And, you know, I've championed the creation of at least one park out in my district in my time as a commissioner. But I, for one, felt that the parks, the proposed parks impact fee that resulted from the study was a little high. You know, we talk a lot about affordable housing. Times have been tough, and I was fully in support of having that as a matter of policy set at 55%. With respect to the mobility fee phase-in, I continue to maintain that a deal is a deal. We made a deal in good faith that it would be phased in. I think in the absence of any action tonight, it's set to go to 90% on January 1 of 2022, and then in the very same year, that October, it would be fully phased in at 100%. So I just want the folks that, you know, want us to do a better job of growth paying for itself to know that, you know, I'm completely on board, and this is adopted at 100%, but it's simply adopted at 100% with a fair phase-in that was agreed upon by all the parties. The mobility fee itself was a heavy lift. You know, the cost of an impact of building the home on our transportation system was increased significantly under the mobility fee program when it replaced the old transportation impact fee. Same with parks. That fee increased significantly after the study was conducted. And I'll remind the viewers that I championed the increase of the fire rescue impact fee. I mean, that's public safety, for goodness sake, and I think it was set at some flat rate of 50 bucks a home or something, and we got that taken care of. So I get it. I want growth to pay for itself, but just on policy grounds and on the grounds that we made a deal in good faith, I'll be voting no tonight on any proposals to increase the parks impact fee or to make any changes to the phase-in on the mobility fee.
Thank you. And I'm not sure if Commissioner Overman or Commissioner Smith were you first?
I think I was.
Okay. You're recognized. I wasn't sure which one went up first.
Thank you. A major reason our transportation system is $9 billion, billion with a B, dollars behind, and our citizens are stuck in frustrating, time-wasting gridlock, and some of our roads are more dangerous than we want them to be, well, they're among the most dangerous in the nation, is that previous administrations have not required developers to pay the true costs of their impacts. Previous county boards have, for decades, made the taxpayers subsidize the development industry, and our tax income cannot carry the developer's share. And keep in mind that mobility fees only pay a part of the capital costs needed for roads. The county taxpayers still have to pay to maintain those roads, to fill the potholes, and all that entails. And yes, we do have to pay for the sins of the past. Recently, our county had an independent study done, which determined the developer's share of transportation costs for each house they build. A previous board under a previous administration decided to take 20% off the developer's share and make the taxpayers pick up that tab. But several things have changed since then. You know, I understand the point about a deal is a deal, but several things have changed, not the least of which is the proposed state legislation. And now that we have had a few important things change, some new information, I'm hoping we can get to 100% tonight. The Supreme Court has struck down the transportation surtax, and we now know we cannot count on that funding source to address our transportation problems. We have recently had a hard look at our transportation budget, where we could all see that we do not have the money in our budget to pay for even those high-priority road improvements on our five-year plan. And that's just the tip of the iceberg of our $9 billion worth of transportation needs. And we now have the threat of a state preemption breathing down our necks. However it's crafted today, it can change tomorrow, it can change at the last minute, and we may, if we don't get ahead of that like other counties are doing, we may not ever be able to reach 100% of the costs that the developers should be paying. And that just means every single house costs our taxpayers more and drives us further into debt. Getting a new sales tax for transportation passed, I know that's the plan of a lot of us, the hope of a lot of us. But that's not a given, that we will get that passed. It passed 57% last time, but the state may raise the bar to 60% before we get there. And we will all have to answer to our citizens about why their money is needed if we are not requiring developers to pay 100% of their fair share. When we go to the voters of this county and talk about a new sales tax for transportation, I, for one, want to tell them that I worked as hard as I could to make developers pay 100% of their share before I ask our taxpayers to pay another penny. I want to tell our voters that not one penny of a new transportation tax on citizens will be used to subsidize developers, not 20%, not 10%. I want to tell them that none of their tax dollars will be used to pay for any part of the developer's share of their impacts on our infrastructure. And by the way, we're talking about millions of taxpayer dollars. So if we leave this at 80% tonight, it will cost the citizens $3 million more this year, plus another $1.5 million next year when it gets to 90%. So we're looking at $4 or $5 million of taxpayer dollars covering the developer's share. And we all know that's not even, that's not even there. So Commissioners, our constituents do not want to pay millions of dollars of the developer's share of their transportation impacts. And so I will make the motion, Commissioner Kemp, unless you're planning to. I'll make the motion that we take this to 100% tonight and eliminate the discount and the phase-in schedule as noted.
Okay, we have a motion and a second, and you're finished with that?
Yes.
Thank you. And we'll go to Commissioner Overman.
Thank you. And thank you, Commissioner Smith and Commissioner White, for your comments. And I too, Commissioner White, agree that a deal is a deal. But unfortunately, when someone changes the rules in the middle of the game, it becomes very difficult for us to be unable to properly do good government when the rules are stacked against us. And unfortunately, because we still have some time before the end of this legislature, and as we've even had these conversations, the rules have changed. And it becomes readily clear that when we raised the fees 100% and then offered a discount because we were afraid that COVID was going to hurt the housing market, and yet FDOT tells us that the DocStamps revenue for this last year is higher than they anticipated because people are still buying homes in our area, but that also could be at risk and not be able to provide us with affordable housing, based on what's happening in Tallahassee right now. It's critical that we do what we need to do at the local level to be good governors of our citizens' not only resources, but of the resources that we need to provide to our citizens. That's what they trust us to do, and that's what I want to do. And while I don't like the idea of changing the schedule we had, because it did give business owners an opportunity to make some changes, they knew that what the 100% was, was 100%. And this changes it from raising in January and then October. Based on what we hear as, you know, possibilities, it would put us back a lot further than that if we were to trust that we were not going to be preempted. And I know, sorry, I'm not in that, I'm not in that game. I'm not in that house right now. And Commissioner Smith, the comments that you made regarding making sure that we have the ability to plan for our future, recognizing that we need to have additional revenues for transportation, and that it's critically important that we have partners in that game when additional building is done, which is what the whole mobility fee is about, along with parks and rec and fire rescue and all of the things that come with additional growth in our community, it is responsible of us to be fiscally responsible and to protect our position to make sure we can deliver the services that are necessary for our citizens to retain the quality of life they expect. So I am gladly able to offer a second to your motion, and I'll stop there.
Thank you. And I guess I'll talk at this point because I don't see any, did, sorry, Commissioner Cohen?
Well, welcome back, everyone. So I don't think it would surprise any of you to know that I've had a very difficult time wading through this this week. When we last visited this item in December, I felt strongly that a deal was a deal, and I particularly pointed to language that showed that the board had voted seven to nothing to revisit this in a year. We're very close now to that year mark. That was in December. We are now just a few weeks away from that year. And while I would have preferred to have had this discussion five or six weeks from now, the fact is that what we're talking about doing tonight won't go into effect potentially until July 1st. A deal is a deal, but on the other hand, preemption is something that we have seen over and over and over again as Tallahassee has stepped on the prerogatives of local governments. And when I was on the Tampa City Council, we spent the last, I would say, the last two years of my eight years there, probably more time on a tree ordinance than on any other single project of that second term. And we must have had 20 workshops and meetings over it. It was, it would come up and everyone would roll their eyes. They couldn't believe we were doing it again. But it was so important that we get it right, and we finally, in the very end, weeks of our tenure, got an agreement that the builders and the neighbors and the arborists and everybody agreed was really a comprehensive, long-term solution and strategy to protecting the city's tree canopy. And literally, within weeks of passing it, our abilities as a city, I was off council already, our ability as a city to make these types of decisions was snatched away from us by the legislature, and it was very, very frustrating. It's still very frustrating because there are trees being cut down in the city in direct contravention of what we worked so hard to get done. Originally, when the bill that prompted this meeting was filed, it had the 3% cap that was referred to earlier. And my understanding, from having followed the bill this week, is that that was removed. However, we all know that what was removed today can be put back tomorrow. And if I were a more optimistic person, perhaps, I would, I would see it, I would believe that the removal of that language was somehow sacrosanct, but we all know that anything can happen within 48 hours of a bill being passed at the end of the session, when God only knows what happens in the back rooms. It's not like here where we have to advertise in advance what we're going to do and allow everybody to comment on it. The other thing that really has weighed on me these last months is the growing of these transportation needs that are so critical and that we are falling further and further behind in meeting. And I have to tell you, I agree with Commissioner White on the issue of parks. I think parks are really important, but I'm not, I will tell you all right now, I'm just not quite there on the parks issue. But on the transportation and mobility issue, I just don't think we have a choice anymore. I think that we are at a point where the needs are so critical, the options are so few, that we have to grab what we can. It's going to come nowhere near making up for what we need in order to get these things done. But I've decided I am going to support the proposed amendment to the mobility fee ordinance tonight in the hope that at least it can help us assert some control over our transportation future. And I do find myself persuaded by the arguments of my fellow commissioners that we simply, we're going to be asking the taxpayers for a lot. We are raising water rates in this county, we know we're going to have to do it, $4 a year, I think, for the next four years. So I think that everybody is going to have to bear this burden, and what that means to me is that down the road, the questions are going to get tougher. They're not going to get easier. The questions are not going to be about mobility fees anymore. They're going to be about gas taxes and ad valorem taxes and every single thing that's out there, and they're also going to be about whether or not we have the wherewithal and the resolve to actually pass a one-cent sales tax for transportation that holds up in court. And that is going to be at the mercy of the voters, but it's not going to happen for another 18 months or so. So that's where I am on this, on this, and I think that we are close enough to the end of the year to be at least within the spirit of looking at it a year later, particularly since whatever we would do would not jump in and take effect until July.
Thank you. And you're totally right, and I know everyone here knows that, that at any, in any of the last few hours in Tallahassee, anything can happen. And I talk about being an aide for Kathy Castor, but I did work as an aide in the state legislature for two years as well, and saw many of things that no one knew or discovered till months after a session ended, and they could be very important things. Even during the course of this, they said 3%, then they raised it to 50%, but then they put it back to retroactive to January if anybody had changed anything. Now that's changed again, I think. So you just never know what might be cooked up. But if we don't do this tonight, we could well find ourselves in a situation, and we have been perennially behind. I can, I feel like I can say, after looking at all the other counties in Florida, their impact fees, there is, we, there's no parallel for Hillsborough County. There is no fast-growing county in Florida that has been as negligent and, I'm sorry, but irresponsible and reckless about funding their transportation and their infrastructure needs as Hillsborough County. And I mean decade after decade. It has got to stop, and tonight is a night that we can make a big point about a part of that and finally, finally go up. But let me say, we're in good company. I just happened to be perusing last night and the last couple of days to see what was what was happening. going on around the state, and because of this piece of legislation by Tallahassee, there have been many counties across the state that are, this Tuesday night, there were at least four counties that went up to 100% of their impact fees. And by the way, there, there aren't, a lot of counties don't ever even phase them in or do anything less than 100%. They're just there at 100%. But one of our speakers mentioned Sumter County, the villages. Last year, they had to do a 25% tax increase in Sumter because they had no money to pay for infrastructure because they had never charged good impact fees. Just this week, they upped their impact fees 100% in Sumter County, the villages, and the vote was three to two. All three of the commissioners who voted for it were newly elected. The two that voted against it, doing it, have been there for a while and probably, I'm guessing, facing election coming soon. And there's been, you know, Sumter County was, had full rooms and they were up at arms. Orange County, I consider that to be the most parallel county to Hillsborough County in the state of Florida. They're approximately the same square miles and approximately the same population, and their fees are very similar to Hillsborough County. And guess what? They had their, they had a phase-in planned, and they were at 75% at mobility fees and park fees, amazingly. And on Tuesday night, they voted and they put their fees up to 100% because they were worried about what Tallahassee would do and that they would still be perennially along. And let me tell you, nobody is, has been as, just bad as Hillsborough County at keeping track and being up there. We are nowhere near the top in our fees right now, I'll let you know that, too. I also saw Citrus County, might surprise you, four to one vote. Lots of Republican counties, it's not a Democratic-Republican thing, four to one vote, raise fees 20% in Citrus County, seven different fees, we only have four, they raised seven different fees on Tuesday night. Charlotte County and Northport increased their impact fees, Charlotte County by $5,000 on Tuesday night, and Northport increased theirs, the city of Northport in Sarasota, increased theirs by 2,500. This is all this last week, all in anticipation of the legislation. And the editorial from Charlotte County said, "Raising impact fees is just a common sense approach to pay for growth in Northport and Charlotte County. If Charlotte County commissioners and Northport city commissioners don't raise impact fees soon, they will have perhaps Mr. Last opportunity to avoid raising property taxes on all of us." That's just a fact. Charlotte County commissioners made the decision a while back to gradually raise fees, but it was a drop in the bucket compared to the growth in construction we're seeing. Every day a new home goes into Charlotte County, we lose revenue. That's because the county is only charging 50% of the allowable impact fee on new home construction. That means, or you know what that means, it says, "They'll be raising our property taxes to pay for roads, new schools, for all the new kids, parks, water and sewer, and all the things impacted by thousands of new residents will soon have." And here in Hillsborough County, the unfortunate truth has been, rather than raise the taxes, we've just been not building the infrastructure, which has put us in a great, a world of hurt, and it's, it's been a terrible answer. So they, again, in Charlotte County, just raised them $5,000. Manatee County already had, and their, their impact fees are higher than Hillsborough County, as are Pasco, and they already had in effect, to go into effect, a study that was done, updated study last year in 2020, which we have not over the decades had, but now we will have and do have. But they just have new fees going into effect as well, and that was already on a schedule to be done. So we're not alone, nor should we be. It's good that we're catching up with the, the rest of counties that care about having infrastructure and, and having growth pay for itself, or at least get somewhat close to it. And so with that, I'm really pleased to see that we're moving forward on this. It's really, really important that we do that. We need to make this statement to the taxpayers here that we are making, you know, as, as we put down, and, and a lot of those homes were promised before, but as they, as they go down and, and build, we have to, we have to make sure that we can pay for it. And the other point I wanted to make is, one of the reasons that was said at the beginning of this, that maybe we shouldn't do this, is because of COVID, and we didn't know about the housing market, and there was lots of uncertainties. Well, guess what? Our housing market is red hot, it is burning up. It's the fourth fastest market in the country, and every day to this moment, we have been losing, as they said in that editorial, income, millions and millions and millions of dollars in the last year, tens of millions, to add to the billion that we lost in the last decade. And we just, we just can't continue that. Go ahead, Commissioner Cohen.
Yeah, I forgot something I wanted to add. You know, we have a workshop coming up, I believe, next month with the school board. And for those of us that are on the MPO, we got a little taste of the fact that we have a real dispute with the school board, a legitimate dispute, over who's supposed to be paying for what in terms of transportation and infrastructure improvements around schools. Regardless, though, of where that all ends up, it's gonna end up with us taking on more responsibility, there's no question about it. And when I say responsibility, I mean financial responsibility. And I think all of us, by the way that we reacted to what we were told by the school board, made it very clear that Vision Zero and safety are things that we are not willing to sacrifice as we move forward in figuring out how we're going to deal with school capacity issues and our responsibilities related to them in the future. And that is another issue that has really come to the forefront in the last couple of months, and I expect in, in the next month or two is, is going to be consuming a lot of time from this board. And this, this money's not going to come anywhere near paying for what we're going to find ourselves responsible for doing if we actually prioritize keeping kids safe on their way to schools.
And Commissioner Overman, did you want to speak again?
Yeah, I just needed a point of clarification. If we were to vote on this this evening, what date would the effectiveness be for the fees?
You'll have to comply with Florida statutes and provide the 90-day notice, and then as soon as that notice is provided, when the 90 days is run, it'll be effective.
So let's say we vote on it tonight. What does that mean?
Cameron, have you calculated when the 90 days would be?
Commissioner, to be clear, the language that's in your draft before you now indicates that it would take effect on June 30th. That date is obviously right before the July 1st date, when the bill was originally proposed to take effect.
That's what I needed to know. Thank you very much.
Okay. And Commissioner Myers, I saw your hand was raised.
Thank you, Madam Chairman. I'd just like to say that reading the material that we received in, I think, the county attorney's office for the briefing that I received yesterday to help educate me a little bit more on the mobility fees and the impact and the park fees. And I've listened to all of our concerns, and I read all the emails of why this is so important for our citizens, of what we should do now. And I had great concerns because I'm the believer that if you vote and say something, you should hold firm to that. And I agree, times, times, times have changed here in this county, and what we're going to be facing coming up, some serious challenges for us. And most of us have already mentioned the transportation tax. And I hope when that rolls around, we have the energy to really push the transportation tax, all of us, to make sure that the citizens that voted in 2018 would have that same opportunity to come back, because we will be the leaders pushing for this tax to pass, knowing that we know what it's stake here in Hillsborough County for our infrastructure projects. And so when I look at this item tonight that is before us, I'm really torn, really torn on the vote. But because I have read all the emails, listened to the concerns, and I'll just wait and I'll go ahead and call for the vote so we can vote and get it out of the way.
Okay, is there, did you have another?
I, I just need a point of clarification as well. Commissioner Smith, does your motion speak to the parks impact fee or just the mobility fee?
No, it's just the first fee we're dealing with at this hearing. We have to do a separate public hearing, actually. And with that, is there any more comments to be made? And seeing none, can we have a roll call vote?
Kemp?
Yes.
Cohen?
Yes.
Hagan?
No.
Myers?
Yes.
Overman?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
White?
No.
Motion carried five to two. Commissioners Hagan and White voted no.
Thank you. Okay, so now we're going to move on to the proposed amendments to the Parks Impact Fee ordinance with all our audio in place. And if we can have that introduced by Cameron Clark from the county attorney's office.
Thank you, Madam Chair, Cameron Clark, county attorney's office. This item is a public hearing on the amendment to the Consolidated Impact Assessment Program ordinance, which contains several of your other impact fees such as parks, schools, and fire rescue impact fees. This amendment before you has the limited effect of accelerating the phase-in or modifying, accelerating the phase-in of the parks impact fee. Again, on May 20th of last year, when the board updated the mobility fee, the board also updated the parks impact fee, which to that date had not been updated since 1980s. The board at that time voted to begin assessing the new parks impact fee on January 1st of this year at 55% of the full rate, and it's scheduled to increase to 65% of the full rate next January 1st of 2022. The item before you would increase the, or accelerate the assessment rate to 100% of the full rate effective June 30th of this year. This is a public hearing.
Thank you. And with that, let me move to the, oops, sorry, my list here. We'll call the first speaker, Ron Weaver.
Mr. Weaver did not call in.
Edward Zack, Zwack?
Mr. Zwack also did not call in.
Noel Lecore?
Good evening. I'm here to speak in favor of increasing the park impact fees. There have been some changes within the Parks Department over the last few years. Some of those changes had residents upset, such as more fees for youth leagues and the permanent closing of some after-school and summer camp programs. I can't help but wonder if some of those changes could have been avoided if developers had been paying the full 100% cost of the impact that they create with each new home. As you all know, the Florida legislature is currently considered legislation in both the House and the Senate that would restrict local governments from increasing impact fees. If this legislation passes, these restrictions could greatly hinder the county from completing its scheduled phase-in park impact fees. I know that the park impact fee increase is high, but let me remind you all that the park impact fees hadn't been raised in 35 years. These impact fees need to be assessed at the full recommended rate prior to the effective date of any proposed bill that might restrict the board's ability to fully access the new development of its impacts on the county's park infrastructure. Please vote yes on this ordinance to eliminate the phase-in of the transportation ability and park impact fees, so that the county can begin collecting these fees at the full 100% rate, now, not later. Thank you all for your time.
Thank you. Russ Kahn?
Mr. Kahn did not call in.
Carol Ann Bennett?
Hi, my name's Carol Ann Bennett. I got to say that it just blows my mind that the fees weren't raised for 35 years. It's been, it's long been known for years and years and years and years that Hillsborough County and Tampa had some of the lowest impact fees in Florida. And so when we finally get around to saying that the impact fees should be what they should be, it's like, oh, no, but we can't do it all at once. Oh, you know, like it's, we gotta only do 55%. I mean, I wish I only had to pay 55% of my VISA bill. I wish I only had to pay 55% of my electric bill. Are you all going to turn around and tell me I only have to pay 55% of my taxes? If no one else gets to pay 55% of their bills, why do, why do builders only have to pay 55%? Now, I'd also like to point out that the people who benefit the most are from the parks, and the people who are going to hurt the most if, if they don't have all the services that they should have, are the people of lower means. People with higher income, they'll just do something else. They can afford to pay for something else and do other things. But people who have less means, a lot of whom are single mothers, this is the only option they have. And I just, I just, it makes me very angry to think that, I'm going to call it like it is, I think it's just simply greed. I ask you to please vote to fund these parks and recreation for people who need them. They should have been funded a long time ago, and there's a big bill that's overdue. Thank you.
Thank you. And Jennifer Mottzinger?
Good evening again, Jennifer Mottzinger, representing the Tampa Bay Builders Association. You know, over the years, park impact fees have not been a significant source of revenue because developers build parks in their communities. If charging these impact fees is our fair share, hey, we're happy to be out of the business of building parks. But like somebody mentioned before, does the county have the money to invest in building these parks instead, and do you have the money to maintain them and staff them? Because if you collect the money, you have to use it for new structures, and you have to use it within a defined period of time. It's not that we've been given a free ride, and it's not that we haven't been paying our fair share, but in many cases, those parks have been built for you instead of paying those fees. Now, it's been said a lot before, but I think it's important for me to say it, demand is, it's unprecedented, absolutely. And we do have an affordability crisis, and at some point, homes will be out of reach for most people that live here, and they're getting priced out of the market. These cost increases are hurting new home buyers in Hillsborough County, who on average, right now, are spending $50,000 more than this time last year for the same house. There's $16,000 for impact fees, by the way, that just went up for another $3,000, and for $24,000 in lumber. Those are just the largest impact fee and material fee increases that we're facing today. But remember, the people that are paying those fees are also paying property taxes. It's a delicate balance between what we want and what we can afford. So please consider the need for these fees and who is ultimately paying them. Thank you for your time, appreciate it.
Thank you. And with that, we're going to close the public hearing. That was our last speaker, and let's see, I don't know if these hands are up from the last time.
No, mine's raised.
Okay. Commissioner Myers, did you want to speak to this? Okay. Commissioner Overman?
Thank you, thank you, Chair, I appreciate it. For anybody who's ever watched any of these meetings, and we've talked about fees that have not been raised in, you know, sometimes decades, as a financial person, I didn't think it was financially responsible to not, you know, pay our bills. And I made a commitment to make sure that we could do the best we could. Now, as Commissioner Cohen had made earlier, and as well as Commissioner Myers, you know, it's going to be really hard for us to do a lot of those things. But I will tell you, this last year has opened my eyes in so many ways about how we choose to spend what money we have. One of the few resources that was available to families through this period over the last year has been our parks. And maybe not been able to play the games and the sports that many of our communities rely on for entertainment, but still, the parks were full of people in fresh air, enjoying the wonderful Florida environment we have, and we don't have enough of them. In addition to that, the parks and rec fees actually provide the resources for families all across this county. And the spaces that we create through that park and recreation fee create a community space for the community to enjoy, even when a developer chooses to create open space in their development. The fact that we're only paying 50, charging 55% of what our costs are seems ludicrous to me, and I have been, rip the Band-Aid off, let's just get this done, and did not agree or want to agree to, you know, to not raise the fee to what it costs. And that's the way our calculations are done. We're not overcharging, we're not charging for more than it is. And if we're continuing to offer a discount over and above what it costs, we will never be able to satisfy our responsibility to meet our citizens' needs. So I move that we move it to 100%.
Okay, we have a, a motion and a second. And Commissioner Smith?
Thank you. And I'll be brief this time because a lot of what I said about the mobility fees applies here as well. The, the, the simple fairness, the financial responsibility, the responsibility to our constituents and our taxpayers. But I do want to highlight what Commissioner Overman said. For those of you who weren't here at the start of the pandemic, when that started and we had to lock down our parks, we had a barrage of emails from people from all walks of life, all spectrums, all ages, begging for those parks to be open. And, and it was eye-opening to me, who has always been a lover of parks and our, from our ELAP to our, our parks, our more developed parks, facilities, how beloved they are and how necessary they are to a full spectrum of life, to a, the life that we are trying to provide for our county and what, what, what important amenities they are to make our community attractive to business and families and as we grow. So I think, you know, transportation is very important, infrastructure, water is the, the source of life, but parks is every bit as important and it's important that, that it, we pay the bill somehow and it costs what it costs. Somebody pays. If, whatever developers don't pay, the taxpayers pay or else nobody pays and we don't get the parks. So I'm happy to support this. I think it's the right thing to do. I think it's what our constituents expect us to do.
And is there anyone? I'll just, I'll, I'll speak to this now because I was, when I've been perusing through, looking through all these impact fees and looking through them in other counties and cities across the state of Florida, I was kind of shocked when I pulled up our impact fees. I first brought it to the board as a commissioner item and I was a little stunned because I read the history and actually in the ordinance, just last year before we changed this, it said park fees will be paced based on the 1980 census. I'm not kidding. We had not touched it, like so many of our fees, like our fire fees, since 1985. It was passed in 1985 and using the 1980 census. I started looking and, and I could see where Commissioner Cohen was a little surprised at the, the cost, but honestly, it's only because they've been so low. If you start looking at what other communities are and where they have just raised them in a reasonable way over the years, you know, then it doesn't look as such an anomaly anymore. And I, at first was a little surprised, but it's, it's really, really important because what's happened is, first of all, we've taken our budget, our taxpayers, and we've been paying for building the capital of the parks as well as paying for the operations. And what happens is when you have to keep putting your money into just building the parks or creating the parks for new places that don't have them, you can't fund your operations like you should be funding and you don't have the staff available for your daycares and your families. And, you know, we have started to run into somewhat of issues with the parks. Just in the last several years, they started charging entrance fees, sometimes parking and other, other things, which I actually have some problems about and would like to talk, but I also know of some centers where they weren't staffed and I was very upset to find that out. And they were basically, they had built the building and it wasn't really being used. And unfortunately, it seemed to happen in some of the lowest income communities. So I, I do feel like we really need to just, as Commissioner Overman says, take the Band-Aid off, give full service as much as we can moving into the future and do the responsible thing. And as I've said, there's three or four other fees that other counties are charging, including Manatee, including Charlotte, including St. Lucy, and including, I can't remember some of the others, but there's numerous counties that are charging additional fees for things like libraries, law enforcement, and community and government buildings that we don't even have here. We don't have. And our fees are not excessive when you look at what other communities are doing. I've just looked at the latest comparisons and I just would like us to start, we're a high-growth county that makes these impacts just come really fast and you can't just, you know, take them easily like lower-growth counties can kind of accommodate the new growth in a reasonable way through their taxpayer dollars. But what we've done in the past is, it has been profoundly unfair to the people living here, especially the lower-income families, that we have put this burden on them that should have never been there. And I really, I really want to see that change. So I, I'll be supporting this and I, and I hope we can just move forward with this because also I just don't want the legislature telling us that, you know, once we're caught behind, we're really caught behind. So I'd like to, I'll be supporting this and I don't know if, are these new hand raises? Or, yes, okay, Commissioner Cohen?
So on this one, I don't feel that the crisis is at the same level as the transportation and mobility issue. I just don't. I love parks. I have spent my career advocating for them, voting for them, and, and I've voted for some that were very controversial and I have voted for them all over, when I was a city council member, all over the city, not just in my own district. The issue that I have here is not that I'm not willing to support this perhaps at some point, but I know what is coming for us. We have got to look at our fire rescue fees. They, they are totally out of whack. We know that we have all of these other issues to face this summer. If, when we weigh this against everything else, we feel that it's appropriate to raise it, I'll be there to do it. But for right now, I think that the mobility argument simply makes itself because the crisis is so totally out of control throughout the county. The parks issue, I think, can be dealt with every, with everything else this summer when we start looking at what our priorities are for the year ahead. This is not a tremendous amount of money and it, it is something that I think just does not have the same level of crisis attached to it as the transportation issue. And I am mindful of the fact that what we did tonight on mobility fees is big. It's, it's a big deal. And, you know, in the spirit of trying to be equitable, of trying to, to, to weigh each thing individually, I'm just not there yet on this. But like I said, once we've looked at fire rescue, once we've had our, our workshop with the school board, once we know what comes out of the legislature, once we know what the federal stimulus has in store for us, I think this belongs in the pot with everything else.
If I could just respond to your fire rescue, because I know you don't have the history here, but before we can do any impact fee increases, we always have to, it's always predicated by a study that has to recommend it. So we just had the study done a couple of years ago. We were just, we just raised it a couple of years ago. That was another 35-year non-raised fee. When we raised, before that, we were charging a flat $50. We were making unbelievably in our big years, $50,000 a year. The last year I checked under that fee. We raised it to what the study said just two years ago. So we will not get a very different result when, when it comes forward. But we're now getting, and it's not enough, but we're getting about $2.5 million. I don't think we will be able to be like, you know, raising that fee or changing that fee dramatically anytime soon. So I, I don't see that as being-
You would agree though, Commissioner Kemp, we're, we're at least 20 under what we probably need countywide, 20 fire stations under where we're supposed to be.
Well, they, yeah, they've said in, in the urban service area, so, but, but, you know, we're not going to necessarily be able to raise the impact fee to get that.
There, there may be a lot of ways that we're going to deal with that. I just feel like the, it all belongs in one pot at one time for us to discuss.
Okay, and Commissioner Myers, did you want to speak? Your hand's up, I just didn't know. I didn't want to miss you. I'm, I'm guessing no? Okay, and seeing, did you want to speak, Commissioner Smith?
So if we leave it here tonight, it's at 55% of what the true developer share of the cost for parks is. And it would go to 65% in 2022 and stop there. Stop there. And we will forever, at best-case scenario, be getting 65% of our parks fee as was determined by the recent study. So, you know, I, I understand the idea of, well, I mean, in order to ever consider this again, we'll have to get to a place where we have a new study and hopefully have a legislature that has not tied our hands. So leaving it this low, when we do have so many other needs in this county to be spending taxpayer dollars on, is, is just really unfair to the taxpayers and we're never, I don't see how we'll ever catch up to paying for the parks that are needed by, as the new homes are built, particularly, you know, in a building boom, we'll just get way further in the hole. So I'm, I'm hoping we can catch this up to 100% where it belongs. Thank you.
Yeah, I want to be clear, I'm not against necessarily doing this. I just don't necessarily want to do it tonight. There was, there was an emergency predicate about this meeting and to me, the transportation issue is so overwhelming at this point that, that it, 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 we just couldn't take the risk of, of what was, was happening in Tallahassee. I'm not, I'm not against using the study later in this year to go back and look at this and, and change the allocation. I just don't necessarily think we need to do it tonight. But I don't think that our hands are tied in terms of bringing it up again, but I, I think we should have a little more context about what some of our other needs are.
Go ahead. Commissioner Overman?
Thank you. And, and this is where I need clarification from our staff. While we have heard for the mobility fee, there was, you know, lots of different gyrations about what, how much increase could happen, those kinds of things. So am I to assume that you believe that if we didn't raise the fees tonight, we, and we wanted to go to from, say, 55 to 65 or 60, 55 to 75 or 85, because that would be the right thing to do, because otherwise we wouldn't make that decision, that we would have the ability to do so? Is that, I mean, because the, is the legislation that we're talking about right now for, only for mobility fees or is it all impact fees?
Cameron, can you address that?
Sure. Commissioner Overman, the, the, it's the Florida Impact Fee Act, so it's mobility fees, it's all impact fee types. To, to go to your point though, as it was originally drafted, the first version of this, which would have capped annual increases at 3%, it's not infeasible that it would be impossible for jurisdictions who were assessing a fraction of their full rates to actually catch up. It's possible during a gallon of downturns when costs decline, those jurisdictions could keep increasing by 3% to try to make up ground. But I, I, under the version that we have now, and then like I said, I want to sort of put an asterisk next to this because you don't know what the final version is going to look like. Under the present version, being able to increase at 25, you know, 25% over a two-year period or 50% over a four-year period, the way that reads now, you'd be able to catch up. Essentially, you could, you could increase about 5% over four years and over that same four years, your actual cost might have only gone up 20%. But I, I just want to clarify that because so much is in motion right now. But yes, the circumstances have, are different now than they were when the hearing was set, but we also don't know where it's going to land. That's all I have, thank you.
Thank you. And that's why I wanted to clarify that, because there is a risk that we could not increase fees at a rate of what it costs based on our goals to get it done. And this is in comparison to the mobility fee. While it's a very big jump from what we had been charging, because we didn't even look at it for 35 years, some absurd number of years, but it's still a reasonable fee. And again, while we heard our callers say, you know, that, you know, the home buyer ends up paying for this, well, the, the people that are buying and selling their homes for absolutely absurd prices right now in certain parts of our county that are not new homes, that aren't paying these mobility fees, aren't, you know, are, are actually paying into with doc stamps and other ad valorem to help pay for these things. But there are new communities that don't have these things. And there's ongoing parks and rec services that we really need to invest in, in our communities. So while I'm, I can appreciate the hesitancy because it is a big jump, but in comparison to other fees and the needs of our communities, I don't believe it's unreasonable to, to consider going 100%, which is what I had previously thought we ought to do. So I'm, I'm staying consistent with what I thought we should do. Just wanted to ask that question for clarification on the increases. So I'll stop there.
I just, and Commissioner Cohen, I appreciate you putting out what you're thinking so that we could at least discuss it. If the legislature were to do the 3%, it would take us 15 years to ever get to, you know, anywhere near 100% if, if it was, you know, if they, if they went to that. I'm just wondering if you would be supportive of, of, of something like 75% or anything that you could entertain? Because I'd like to be able to get there in the future if they do something. And it's just the fact that we're so far behind that we are caught in this place. If we kept up our fees like they do in Osceola and Orange County and Collier and Charlotte and like just all these counties across the state that would have never done what we've done, we wouldn't be, and I, I realize the urgency of the transportation versus the parks, but I'm just wondering if we could get closer, if you could, if you have, would entertain anything closer so we wouldn't be as far behind if they did something?
Why don't I listen to everyone and then we'll-
Sure. And Commissioner Myers, you're recognized.
Thank you. I'd like to address this to the county attorney. If we tabled this tonight and come back with a fee schedule to see over the period of time, could we do that? Could we table for the park impact fees?
If you're thinking you might reconsider it, what you may want to do is continue the public hearing to a date and time certain, to wait to get that information so that we don't have to re-advertise and so forth?
Thank you.
You know, if, if we did that, I would be willing to consider some type of, of something. I don't, I don't know what, but I would be willing to consider something, yes.
If, if we continued your-
If we, if we give this a little time, yes, I would, I would be willing to consider something. I, I don't know that, that I can support going to 100%, but, but you know what? You're making some important arguments and, you know.
The only thing about continuing, and I wouldn't, you know, have, I, I wouldn't have problems with that, but for, we've, it's 90 days that you take, once you pass it, it takes 90 days. So right now, we're up against, they typically create the new laws on July 1st. And so that's why we had this special hearing and this special fast-track schedule is so that we could get this implemented before, during June, so that we could make that July 1st deadline.
But my understanding is this bill now says it becomes effective on the governor's signature, which means that we're already, I think, within, we're already, we're all- we are all- signature, which means that we're already, I think, within, we're already, we're already within that 90 days. If that becomes an argument, I think it's going to affect our mobility vote as well. But, Christine Beck, if you don't mind.
That's correct, Commissioner. The, if the current version of the bill has it effective upon the governor's signature, so that would create, create that issue, it's really the...
I mean, the issue, the issue already exists.
Well, that's true, but I, if it, if they do go back to the regular time, or that gets stripped of it, again, we're back in the same place again that we were before, which I think could well happen again. We just don't know. And we don't know, obviously, about, you know, all the traps that can be set for us in the final legislation, whatever that is, or if it is. But I think our best opportunity would be, our best shot would be to put something tonight, and continuing it would not allow us if July 1st, which would be the standard, because we have those 90 days in between. So if, it's, it's not that I wouldn't be willing, you know, I think these are really important and we should get everything up to 100% because, I'll just tell you too, my, my personal story is that in, believe it or not, when I was working here as an aide to Kathy Castor in 2003 to 2006, the, and I had no idea that these, all these impact fees were so awful, but what, the one thing we were dealing with was school impact fees. And unbelievably, because right now, they're about 8,200, unbelievably, the impact fees in Hillsborough County for schools were $195. And all the surrounding counties, Polk, Pasco, Manatee, at the time, were 4,000, some 4,000-something. We were $195. We struggled for a year to, at the time, there was like not appetite, and one by one by one, we got support, so that we could barely get four votes to raise the fees to about $4,000. But what they decided to do was to step it in. That was the thing that they did at the time. And what happened is, they stepped it in, and it stayed low during this red-hot market that happened before 2007, and they only got the fees up once the crash came. So, you know, like, we lost the benefit of that again, which I, I really, it really taught me a lesson about this too, and I worry about that as well, in terms of being able to effectuate where, where we should be and reasonably, because I see that we're in the same place again, and I'd really just like to see if we could do something to get it closer. But I guess we have no further discussion here, so...
Me.
Yes, Commissioner Smith.
So, shall we try to, I mean, I would be open to a motion for 80% tonight, something like that, if, but, I mean, I agree with Commissioner Overman that it needs to be 100%. However, I would certainly support a motion for 80% or whatever we can get done tonight, given the time constraint. So if, if one of the commissioners who would be interested in doing that would make a substitute motion, I'll, I'll support that.
Commissioner Kemp.
Yes, Commissioner Myers.
We're here tonight because what we thought the governor was going to impose to do. So we have some flexibility as a Hillsborough County Board of County Commissioners to decide what we think would be best. I mean, tonight, I cannot go along with 100%. Maybe 75%, maybe so, but not even 80% or 100% of supporting that tonight.
Okay. Yes, Commissioner Overman.
I can modify my motion, because it does appear as though if it were to go forward, it wouldn't pass. I mean, I'm actually getting better at counting votes here, considering I was always told I can count the votes here, so, you know, I've learned how to do this a little bit better. So it does appear as though we wouldn't get 100% if we were to go forward, although that dismayed me a great deal, because I still believe in paying our bills. And we've indicated with our study that what the costs are, and we previously agreed to discount them at a rate that I believed was way too, too deep. So I'd be willing to consider a modification, but not, not happily. Let me just put that way. So if, if, if it meant that we were able to get something done this evening, I would like to modify my motion to 80% and see what the discussion holds.
Well, for the purposes of getting to yes, why don't we go to 75%? I think that's, that was, and we'll move on it tonight.
All right, I'll modify it again. If that's, if I could get your second to modify, I'll modify that to 75%.
Okay, so we have a motion by Commissioner Overman, seconded by Commissioner Smith, to move the park fees to 75%. And we're seeing no further discussion, or do we have any? Okay, seeing no further discussion, if we could have a roll call vote?
Kemp?
Yes.
Cohen?
Yes.
Hagan?
No.
Myers?
Yes.
Overman?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
White?
No.
Motion carried five to two. Commissioners Hagan and White voted no.
Okay, thank you. And with that, I think, do we have any further, do we can just adjourn at this point? We're all set. Okay, great. Thank you all.
Thanks, everyone.
Yes, good night.